Awesome, fantastic. So, in the name of God, the most beneficent and the most merciful, my name is Malihia and I'm a teacher with the WR DSP for French. My family and I came to Canada in 2008 and yesterday was actually my 13 year anniversary in Canada. My family and I came to Canada to escape the ongoing Shia genocide and persecution in Pakistan. And unfortunately Shia genocide is not only limited to Pakistan. It is with great honor and privilege that with God's grace, I will be hosting the first ever webinar on the Shi'as and the Shia genocide in a Canadian public school board organized by myself and my school board. So, thank you very much Water Blue Visionist for School Board once again. We will be discussing various topics about the Shi'as and Shia genocide. And so, without further ado, I would like to introduce my esteemed guests, Sayyed Saleh Al Khazbinee and Shairaz Jafar Dalla. I would like to briefly introduce Sayyed Saleh Al Khazbinee first. Sayyed Saleh Khazbinee hails from a prominent religious family from Iraq. He immigrated to the US with his parents in 1994. After completing high school in San Diego, Sayyed Khazbinee moved to Iran where he studied in the Islamic seminary of Qum. His studies focused primarily on Islamic jurisprudence and Islamic scripture. After completing his studies, he returned to the US and acquired a bachelor's degree in sociology from the University of Michigan in Ann Arbor and a master's degree in Near Eastern Studies from Wayne State University. Currently, he lectures weekly at several mosques and community centers in Michigan. He travels to numerous communities across the globe, spreading the message of Islam and religious tolerance. Sayyed Khazbinee also teaches courses on Islamic ideology and Quranic studies. He is married and has three children. My second esteemed guest is Shairaz Jafar Dalla. Shairaz Jafar Dalla is a world renowned lecturer on Islam, an education counselor, a parenting and marriage coach, a radio host, a published author, newspaper columnist, a blogger, a playwright, a puppeteer, and popular TV anchor who appears three times a week on her own TV show on several cable networks. She holds a bachelor's degree in psychology and sociology and a master's degree in the field of education and has spoken twice outside the White House in Washington DC. She has given a Muslim TED Talk, spoken at Princeton University, and at large outdoor rallies attended by thousands in downtown Toronto, Stockholm, Lychester, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing that, and Chicago. She lectures on Islam at mosques, universities, churches, and interfaith gatherings. And as a polyglot who speaks over six languages fluently, a published freelance writer, playwright, motivational speaker, and anti-racist educational counselor by profession, she conducts workshops on race and cultural sensitivity and often appears on TV panels and radio talk and shows to speak, oh, sorry about that, I misread that, and radio talk shows to speak on race relations. Thank you so very much Imam and Zakra Shairaz Jafar Dalla for being here. We will start off with the Imam's presentation on the origin of Shia Islam and what happened in Karbala. Imam, if you could let me know whenever I can share my screen to your presentation?
Yes, you can share it, thank you.
I'll share it right now, thank you very much.
Bismillah, rahmanir rahim. I begin in the name of God, the beneficent, the merciful. I would like to thank you all for joining us and taking this opportunity and giving us this opportunity to talk about the Shia School of Thought and talk about Islam and the Muslim community. I would also like to thank Malihia Aliyas for setting this up and I commend her determination and her, you know, her patience with setting all this up, so thank you very much. So, the Muslim community has the Shia School of Thought and the Sunni School of Thought. And there are many misconceptions today, especially in the West and post 9/11 about Islam and the Muslim community. And we need to learn about these misconceptions. We need to be better educated about the Muslim community because Islam and the Muslim community are not monolithic. You know, within Muslims, Muslims come from all cultures, many races, many ethnicities, they can be Muslim. You have Muslims in the Middle East and you have Muslims all the way in Africa, in China, in Europe, in the United States, in Canada. So, Muslims are not monolithic. And not monolithic in culture, in race, and also not monolithic in terms of sects and in terms of beliefs. So, this is why today we're addressing and we're talking about the Shiai School of Thought, the Shiai sect. It's very unfortunate that there's a lot of negative portrayal of Islam and Muslims in the media. And this is why I believe it's very important to hold these type of sessions and these type of, you know, educational seminars or sessions and in order to learn more about one another. Today, we're talking about the Shiai sect and we want to talk about the persecution of the Shia community. As we know, the Shia community is a minority. The Shi'as, they make up a minority within the Muslims. And in the West, in Canada, in the United States where I am, we are a minority within a minority. So, it's very important for us to speak about, you know, issues of concern. And we hear a lot of, you know, aggression going on and persecution going on that is directed towards the Shi'as. And Insha Allah, we will discuss that. For example, Malihia said her family escaped persecution. My family as well, my family in Iraq, my family, 18 members of my family were killed because of the hatred that is directed against the Shi'as. And my family had to escape from Iraq and we were not able to go back until the fall of Saddam. So, this is a very important issue that we want to discuss. And we hear about, we hear about the persecution of the Shia community all the time. Just a few weeks ago, we heard about the Hazara, the Hazara Shi'as in Afghanistan where there was an explosion in a school, a middle school. And many, you know, tens of schoolchildren were killed. So, what is the origin of Shia Islam? The Muslim community, Islam as we know is the fastest growing religion and there's over 1.9 billion Muslims in the world today. So, Muslims make up Shia and Sunni. We have Shia Muslims and Sunni Muslims. Of course, the Sunni Muslims, they make up the majority. Sunni Muslims are about 1.6 billion Muslims and the Shi'as are only around 300 million Muslims. I am a Shia and I am speaking on behalf of the Shiai School of Thought and the Shiai sect. You find that the Shia Muslims, they're predominantly in Iran, in Iraq, in Pakistan, in Afghanistan, Lebanon, Bahrain, Azerbaijan, the eastern parts of Saudi Arabia, and Kuwait. Of course, in some of these countries, they don't make up the majority. But in Iran and Iraq and Azerbaijan, they make up a majority. In Bahrain, they make up a majority. In other countries that were mentioned, they don't make up a majority. The division, why did the Shiai School of Thought emerge? Or how did the Shiai School of Thought emerge? And did the Shiai School of Thought emerge after Islam? Or was it something that existed with Islam? We believe that the division, and this is something Sunnis and Shi'as will tell you, that the division within Muslims, because during the time of Prophet Muhammad, there were no Shi'as or Sunnis, it was all Muslims. And Prophet Muhammad died in 632 Common Era. Then, there was a split. One group, they began to follow the family of Prophet Muhammad and led by Imam Ali as the first Imam, the first leader, the first head of state, and the first to represent the message and the teachings of Prophet Muhammad and represent the Quran. And another group followed the companions, followed the path of the companions and the friends and those who were with Prophet Muhammad. So, you have two groups emerge. One is the Shia, and Shia by definition, it means follower of. But because they became known as the Shia of Ali, the followers of Ali after Prophet Muhammad, therefore, the Shi'as are known as the Shia. And the Sunni School of Thought, they're called the Sunnis because they say we follow the Sunna, the tradition of Prophet Muhammad, through his companions and through his, those who were around him, the Muslims who were with him. So, here now, I put the Ayatollahs because a lot of people, they wonder, you know, who are the leaders of the Shi'as? We, the followers of the Ahl Bayt, the Ahl Bayt, they're the family of the Prophet and the Shi'as, they follow the family of the Prophet. After the family of the Prophet, the leaders who we follow, they're referred to as Ayatollahs now. And those are the scholars that connect us with the teachings, the original teachings of the Ahl al-Bayt, of the family of the Prophet, and the Prophet himself. Now, if we could go to the next slide, please. The struggle is, when someone thinks about the Shia Sunni struggle, some might think that it was all about power and it was all about politics. But the fact of the matter is that politics is probably not, doesn't make that much of it. The major struggle was about the soul of Islam. And the, both groups, the those who follow the family and those who follow the companions, they say we're trying to get closer to Prophet Muhammad. One says we're getting closer to the teachings of Prophet Muhammad through the companions. Others, they say, we, we say we get closer to the teachings of Prophet Muhammad through his family. But over time, over time, the, there was a, you know, the division became bigger and bigger because of the different interpretations of the Quran and different interpretations of the message of Prophet Muhammad. But when we talk about the Sunnis and Shi'as, some, you know, they have the impression that Sunnis and Shi'as hate one another, they can't stand one another, and they're always fighting with one another and there's always sectarian violence that's going on. That's not true. Sunnis and Shi'as get along very well and many times they intermarry with one another. We pray together, we go to Hajj together, the pilgrimage, and we fast together. And we live in communities with one another. It's just the difference of the approach and the understanding of some of the details of the message of Islam. Now, within the Sunnis and the Shi'as, the majority get along. There are fringe elements and fringe groups that sow division within the Muslim community. And this is, this exists within the Christian community, within the Jewish community, and within many other communities. You see that there's always fringe groups that, you know, divide, divide and cause differences. So, one of those groups is the Wahhabi, the Wahhabi School of Thought, which is an offshoot of the mainstream Sunni School of Thought. And this Wahhabi School of Thought, they consider Shi'as as heretics. They consider Sufis as, you know, astray, and other Sunnis, other Sunnis as well. They consider them as, you know, non-Muslims because they differ with them in some minor issues here and there. So, the Wahhabis accuse, and they have been for centuries, they have been accusing the Shi'as of being against and working against the true Islam and calling the Shi'as kafir and non-Muslims and attacking the Shi'as and anyone who believes and follows the Shiai School of Thought. And, you know, I mentioned earlier that Muslims are not monolithic because today, it's very unfortunate, you know, someone's watching news, CNN or Fox News or whatever it is, and they think that all Muslims are the same. I remember a few years ago when ISIS was, you know, killing people in Syria and in Iraq. Some people, they came and they said, "You Muslims, you're all like ISIS." Without knowing that ISIS would kill Shi'as before killing any non-Muslim before. So, they, you know, ISIS is against Muslims as well. And the Taliban and Al Qaeda and all these terrorist groups, they're against the Shi'as before they, you know, before they started placing their hatred against non-Muslims as well. So, this is something that we have to consider. And this Wahhabi mentality has been going on for such a long time, for hundreds of years. But now, in the past hundred years, we see that it became so powerful and it became so strong. And why? Because petroleum was discovered in some parts of the Muslim world. And in those parts of the Muslim world is exactly where these thoughts and these ideas emerge. So, they, now you have these Takfiri, these, you know, ideas that are calling everyone a non-Muslim and everyone's a heretic. And then you also have petrodollar, you have politics. So, it all adds to the tension. Now, since we're talking about Shia Islam, I just want to, I have put the Mahdi here. We believe that at the end of time, just like Christians and just like Jews believe that at the end of time, justice will be established. We believe that the Mahdi, who is the 12th of the children of, from the Ahl al-Bayt, from the family of the Prophet, and this is something that all Muslims actually believe in, that at the end of time, a man by the name of Al Mahdi, who will be from the progeny of Prophet Muhammad, from the children of Prophet Muhammad, and he will establish justice on earth after it has been filled with oppression. And we believe that he will rise alongside Jesus and they will be on the same, on the same side with one another, fighting oppression and injustice in the world. If we could go to the next slide, please. So, we talked about Shia Islam. The Shiai School of Thought is a, you know, an ideology that has existed ever since the beginning of Islam. Ever since the beginning of Islam, there have been followers of Ali ibn Bitalim, of Imam Ali, because we believe Prophet Muhammad told the Muslims to follow Ali after him and follow the family, his family after him. Whereas the Sunni School of Thought believes that the Prophet, he left leadership, the matter of leadership up to the Muslims and he allowed them to decide. And they decided that the, that the, some of the companions, they came to power in their own way. Now, 50 years, 50 years after the death of Prophet Muhammad was a major event that shocked the Muslim world. And until today, until today, it is a very important event that the Shi'as commemorate and Muslims, in fact, all Muslims commemorate. But specifically, it's something that is more associated with the Shiai School of Thought. And that was that 50 years after the death of Prophet Muhammad because the family of the Prophet, they were sidelined, they were marginalized, and others came to power. Now, some of those who came to power, some of them, they had good intentions. But later on, by the time, 50 years later, an individual comes to power and he wages war against the family of the Prophet, the very family of Prophet Muhammad, and the grandson of Prophet Muhammad, Imam Hussain, was killed on the day of Ashura. Ashura means the 10th day. It's the 10th day of the first lunar Islamic month in the Islamic lunar calendar. And it's a day of tragedy. It took place year 61 after Hijra, the Islamic lunar calendar, year 61 after Hijra. And in the Common Era calendar, it was year 680 Common Era. Imam Hussain, the grandson of the Prophet, he was killed, he was beheaded, and his body was left, you know, in the land of Karbala and his family were paraded throughout the Muslim land. Now, this important event, it shapes the Shia identity until today. Because, one, it symbolizes the oppression that has taken, that has been taking place throughout the centuries against the Shia and against the Ahl al-Bayt, against the family of the Prophet first and foremost. And second, against their followers, against those who follow them and take their religion from them. And second, this event, the event of Ashura inspires many Muslims and specifically the Shi'as to stand against injustice, even if the oppressor is someone claiming to be a Muslim. Because the man and the army that killed Imam Hussain, the grandson of the Prophet, was a Muslim army. And the leader who killed the grandson of the Prophet was a person who was claiming to be the leader of the Muslims. So, here, this has put this, you know, feeling, the sentiment within the Shi'as that whenever we see injustice, whenever we see oppression, we have to stand against it. Even if the person carrying out the injustice is a so-called Muslim, we have to stand against it. So, this is one issue that has caused a lot of the, you know, aggression and genocide to take place against the Shiai School of Thought. I told you earlier that 18 members of my family were killed in Iraq. Now, Saddam, Saddam, he did not really care about Shia or Sunni, he was a secular person. But because within the Shi'is, there is this sentiment and especially this sentiment is revived every year, every year on the 10th of Muharram, every year on Ashura, it is revived, to stand out against injustice, to speak out against the oppression that's going on. Because the Shi'as, and especially the scholarly families, and, you know, they're speaking out against the oppression, they become victims of the persecution. Now, whether the one persecuting them is a person who cares about religion or does not care about religion, that sentiment that exists within all the Shi'as leads them to speak out against the, against the tyrants, against the dictators. And, you know, that area, the region of the Middle East, most of the leaders did not come to power democratically. So, that puts them at odds with their people and that leads to genocide, that leads to apartheid, that leads to marginalization, and that leads to the Shi'as being victims of anti-Shia hatred as we are seeing, you know, going on and carrying place in the Muslim world today. So, if we could go to the next slide, please. So, as Shi'as, we commemorate the martyrdom of Imam Hussain, the grandson of Prophet Muhammad, every year, every year. And the event, the month is called Muharram, it's the first Islamic lunar month. And we will have that in August, it will begin in August. Every year, by the way, the Islamic lunar month changes every year because we go by the moon. So, every year, it comes back 10 days. And we commemorate on the 10th of that day, the tragedy of Imam Hussain. Now, one of the things that some of the Shi'as do, most of them, is that we go to, in addition to going and performing the Hajj, the pilgrimage, going to Mecca, going to Saudi Arabia, what all Muslims do, Sunnis and Shi'as. The Shi'as, in addition to that, they have, we have another pilgrimage. We don't call it pilgrimage, but we call it Ziyara instead, which is visiting the graves of the Imams, of our leaders, of Imam Hussain, of Imam Ali, his father, of, you know, the other Imams. And you have the graves of these Imams there in Saudi Arabia, in Medina, next to Prophet Muhammad where Prophet Muhammad is buried. You also have in Iraq, you have where Imam Hussain is buried in Karbala in Iraq. And then there are other Imams as well, because we have 12 Imams. And they are buried in Iraq and there's one Imam also buried in Iran, Imam al-Rida, Imam Ali ibn Musa al-Rida, the eighth Imam of the Ahl al-Bayt. So, this is something that all Shi'as do. Now, the day of Ashura is, as we mentioned, it's commemorated every year by millions of people all over the world. Now, some, they come and they bring out some gory images of, you know, people commemorating Ashura, but these, this, you know, this, they only represent a small minority of people commemorating the tragedy of Imam Hussain. Just as, you know, on Good Friday, you see some Catholics, they, they, they do some bloodletting. They don't represent all Catholics. Similarly, there are some Shi'as that, you know, partake in some of those activities. But that does not represent all the Shi'as. We gather, we give lectures and we educate people about reform and about, you know, Islam and Islamic values. So, one issue is that we wanted to get across today is that for Shi'as, the day of Ashura is a very sensitive day and it's extremely offensive for Shi'as to declare that day as a day of celebration or a festival or a happy day. And it's a day, a somber day and a day that we, you know, commemorate the tragedy of Imam Hussain and the family of Imam Hussain. So, this is just a quick summary of Shia Islam, Shiai and the Sunni School of Thought, and Ashura. And if there are any questions later on, I'll be happy to take them. I'm going to end here, thank you very much. Wassalamualaikum, peace be upon you all.
Thank you so, so, so very much for that enlightening lecture, Imam. My next guest is Shairaz Jafar Dalla. And Insha Allah, she will be talking about the genocide of the Shi'as in the 20th and 21st centuries. And she will also be sharing some tips on how to make our workplaces and our schools a more inclusive and accommodating spaces for our Shia workers and as well as our Shia students. Zakra, it's all yours.
Thank you so much, Malihia, that's very kind of you. Thank you for your kind introduction. I want to thank you all for taking time out of your busy schedule to give us your time so that we can tell you about something that is not only very important to us as believers and followers of this faith, as Shi'as, but as well as educators and as parents, as citizens, where we want to make the world a better place and we want to make the education system a better system for all the students that are with us from all over the world. I'm going to be sharing as well a PowerPoint. But before I do that, I'm so new at this Google Meet. You learn something every day, so today was a real learning experience. Is there any way we can just pin my screen so that we always see my face on the screen? Because I know we do that with Zoom so that there is less distraction and you're looking just at me. If I could ask the host if that's possible, to just make a pin myself so that you can see me on the screen only. Is it possible?
I think it is. Deepa, is there something that you can help her with, please?
Are you presenting a PowerPoint as well?
Yes, I will be doing a PowerPoint. Oh, Esther says that you can do it on your, if you can pin me to your screen. So, because I'd like to have that contact, eye contact you all. Sometimes we're looking at small screens, it's really hard to get that connection. So, yeah, Deepa, is there any way that you can pin me to the screen? Make it highlight perhaps like we do in Zoom?
I think we all do that individually on our own.
I see, okay. So, if you go ahead, I don't know. All right, and I'll be, you can pin yourself. Thank you, I'm going to see this, remove this tile, what is this? Pin to screen, all right. Yes, so I've pinned myself, but I hope that you all are also seeing me right in the middle of your screen, you know, I'd like to have your attention. You know, as teachers, we like to always be where the kids will, you're not the kid, I'm just saying. It always often is very, you know, it helps with the concentration. Thank you so much. All right, so, let me begin by, yes, introducing myself, I'm Shairaz Jafar Dalla. And I have a Bachelor's in Psychology and Sociology, but I also have a Master's in Education. And the way that this happened in my life was that I too was a new student, an immigrant to this country when this was 40 years ago. So, that really dates me. But you can understand that I've been here a long time and now my children are in the school system and are, two of my kids have graduated from university already and my youngest is in grade nine. It was in grade nine that I really experienced a change in what it meant to be me. When I came to this country, I was 12. But by grade nine, I had already experienced a lot of racism. And 40 years ago, you can imagine, even though multiculturalism had been introduced as a policy, it was still in the song and dance stage. And Alhamdulillah, thank you, thanks to Allah and thanks to the amazing leaders of this country and the educators. That we've come a long way and we are all working to make the school system better because we all stand to benefit from it. So, 40 years ago when I came here, yes, I struggled with racism and I suffered in such a way that I went through the bullying and I went through even a bit of physical violence and my school books were stolen and there were all sorts of things that were happening to me. By, by the time I got to university, I wrote about my experience. I was in my fourth year, I was 22 years old. It took me from the age of 12 to 22 to process all that, where I lost a sense of self-worth, where I hated the people who weren't helping me. Of course, hating the people who were bullying me, but also looking at all the adults around me and the educators, not necessarily my parents, but my teachers, the principals, those who are witness to all of that, who thought this is not our problem, right? Kids will fight, kids will bully. Who thought this is not our problem, right? Kids will fight, kids will bully. And but when I got to university, I wrote about my experience, and the title of this article was I Ain't Sitting Beside Her. It was printed in the Toronto Star uh on the front page, and it's still being used in in schools and in universities. As a teaching tool, because it's about a student who has suffered, who suffered, and my recommendations to the people. Uh about, you know, what I felt they could have done and they should be doing, right? That was just the beginning stage, but then I got into a a master's degree because people kept coming to me and saying, well, you've suffered, so tell us what we should we do. Nobody has all the answers, especially us who've suffered, we're like, you're supposed to solve it. But yes, it's got me to reflecting a little bit, and and eventually my master's thesis is also used by educators. And in the uh in the teaching uh university, in the in the in the. What is it called, pre-service teaching uh that they've uh used it to. Share some information about what happens to a student when they're going through this and how we can help. Why am I sharing this with you? I'm letting you know that now we've moved, we've come a long way. And yet, the world continues to throw. Uh a lot of monkey wrenches at us. Right now with the pandemic, things have uh really messed up how our children are studying. And the gap in the education and in the social environment and all that stuff, so we're already dealing with a lot. But we're also dealing with a huge influx of Syrian refugees and a lot of persecuted people from all over the world. Who are finding safety here. And as educators, we're asking ourselves, is this our problem now? We're supposed to be teaching math, science, educa- you know, geography. But now we're supposed to be taking care of their needs, and we have to worry about whether they've had a good breakfast. Now we're also to be worried about their psychological state of mind, absolutely. Because I uh stand here as a as a success story. I came out of this, I could have easily come out a very, very traumatized person, which I was. But this country gave me the education, gave me the empowerment, and yes, there were educators around uh along the way. Teachers who said, let me help you, how do I fix this for you? Let me protect you, what do you need? Um also, sometimes I needed a safe place to sit, sometimes the attendance office would just keep me there because people were doing something. And I was afraid to go there. Uh sometimes they would just sit and talk to me and be the only friend I had at school. Because I was bullied, but I was also ostracized and left alone. So I came out of that having faith that good people exist and that they can help us get through this mess. I thanks uh Malihay, uh because she wanted this to happen, because she realized. There are teachers, there are educators, and there are other students who don't know why the Shia and the Sunni are in conflict. Well, actually, as she explained, there is no conflict between the Shia and Sunni. There is a rogue group that has uh called itself a sect of Islam, but they're not. They're a new um invention. Uh and uh and what they've done is created fights between these two sects, which. Although there were differences, it was never about killing each other, because we all believe in the same god and the same book. So what's happened is, now we've got children in our school system who are every day seeing. A genocide happening around the world. Globally, there are acts of violence happening. These children are coming to our school, and there are people who are not only Sunni Shia, but also Wahabi. Or who are Sunni but who are being influenced by the Wahabi faith. Um which actually teaches violence, which actually thinks that it's okay to kill people. Because they believe in something that's not what they believe in. It's literally okay to not only kill them, but kill, but also destroy their shrines. So it's become a genocide and it's affecting us. We cannot. Do that, what people used to often say, take this home, this is your problem. This is a land of immigrants, but it's also become a land of refugees and of people who have fled. Um some really difficult things, and they've come here to find safety, and they're very grateful. But we need to help them um have a safe place, so that education can happen. So that they can be giving members of society, so that they don't they don't grow up bitter and feeling neglected and and not understood. I remember just growing up forty years ago here, when pizza was um ordered, and they would order pepperoni. And I had no courage to say, we don't eat pork. So they, and if someone knew, they would say, just peel it off. Well, that's not possible either, because the faith doesn't allow that. But there was no confidence in me to be able to even say, I can't eat this, so I'd quietly say, I don't like pizza, or no, I'm not hungry. And it all time to feel that empowerment, to say, I don't believe in this, oh, I don't cater to that, no. Um this is against my my principles. It takes a lot of courage. So I thank uh teachers like Malihay, who have said, we need to empower young people. But we also need to look at the staff, that within the staff, there are students, uh there are uh there are teachers. Or any part of the staff, admin, who might wanna go on a pilgrimage, which is not necessarily known by the mainstream. Because they know about the Sunni faith more, they do not know that people go to Ziyara, the other pilgrimage. Which is to the shrines in Iraq and Iran. So these kinds of things, where, and I commend Malihay for she, uh because she. Uh fought for this with the school board, uh and 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 brought awareness that, you know, can you change this word from festival to commemoration? Because festival, me, it connotates a celebration, where this is a mourning that we uh Shi'as do as well. Uh if it's okay for someone to get accommodation to travel and not lose their job um. For Hajj, let's say, that should be also for this pilgrimage, which we Shi'as consider as important as Hajj. As well, the other thing, that when there's exams, when there's um, you know, huge projects due. When there is a commemoration for the Shia, which is a mourning period, which is Ashura, for example, or other major dates. That these should be included in the school calendar, and also some kind of accommodation can definitely be made, as we do. For people who are celebrating a holiday, that they are uh, they don't have to do the exam that particular day, they're given accommodation. Um so Malihay has already done quite a lot, a lot in that, and I um really commend her for that. I also uh thank you all, that you you being here in itself is uh showing that. You are willing to have uh your awareness, your horizons broadened. As well, uh Malihay tells me that it is uh fellow teachers of uh of different faiths. Uh who encouraged her, and when you have a Jewish staff member saying to a Muslim staff member. Let's learn about this faith of yours. That's so beautiful, and that's exactly this country that we love, Canada, is all about. But we are here, this is our country, and we are all brothers and sisters here. Uh like our Prime Minister Joe uh told the Syrian refugees that this is home now, this is your home. So why are we doing this? We uh we want to tell you that the Shia, the Sunni, and especially the Wahabi are totally different. And just like we often used to assume that Korean and Chinese and Japanese, Singaporean, Hawaiian, Filipinos. Are all Chinese, just because they had features. Then we learned that no, you can't lump them all together, that even people from India, there's so many different types of Indians. And they're not all Hindus, uh some are Muslim and some are Christian in India, we've learned, and as we learn. We can better um um live with each other, and we can teach better, and uh God willing. So uh we wanna create classrooms where students feel a part of the community, the educators. Uh can help the students feel valued in your school experiences, and that's why you're here, and that's why we wanna talk to you today, and we are. And we know that uh when we make the school and the classroom uh safe for students as well as staff. Uh what happens? Everyone feels more motivated, they feel more um accepted. They perform better academically, but also psychologically, uh socially. And they eventually grow up to be activists, they become policymakers. They become people who wanna be part of a solution, because someone helped them along the way. It was a teacher who said, tell me more about your faith. I had a teacher in grade thirteen, in those days, there were thirteen, who said, teach uh your class about Islam. In those days, that was really hard, and I, you know, taught my fellow students what the hijab was. I myself didn't wear hijab in those days. I showed them the the sand of Karbala that we pray on. Which is, by the way, a a a huge um source of contention for the Wahabis. Because they believe that that is making this sand an idol, whereas we believe that it is an. Intercessionary thing, that it allows us to connect to the land of Karbala. And uh when I was in Mexico and uh they were telling me about special stones that have healing powers. There are many cultures that believe these things, and we allow them, what you allow is, and tolerate is definitely the wrong word. They have a right to believe what they believe, but what happens is when people bring even what is called a thurba or the sand of Karbala. Uh which is often made into a little round tablet or a square, um that often um because of what. Children have learned at home, um that this is idol worship, they will actually take that and throw it, break it. Or make it a s- a a source of, uh you know, it's outing somebody. And in the Shia faith, because it has always been a persecuted uh sect. What's happened is, there is a concept of takia, which is when you are allowed to not really out yourself. You're not allowed, you're allowed to not really mention it if your life will be in danger. And it is unbelievable how many of us, even in this day and age in twenty twenty-one, have friends, very close friends. Who we have not been able to say that we are Shia too, because we're so afraid about the stereotypes that they are, it's gonna trigger. And the hatred. Um recently, uh I think it was two years ago, in England, a young lady. Uh um in in the month of uh holy month of Ramadan, uh she'd come out with uh after prayers, which happens in the middle of the night. Uh for the Sunnis, when she, uh but this was actually, she was a Shia. She had come out, because also prayers happen in the middle of the night for the Shia as well. Uh what had happened was that she had come out with her friends, she was uh bullied, because she was a Muslim and she was wearing a hijab, and she was killed. So a GoFundMe uh was uh set up, and people, lots of Muslims, the outpouring of love that happened. And a lot of money was collected for her family. I believe her name was Moore. And what happened was, eventually, it was discovered that she was a Shia. And the person who started the GoFundMe uh sent out a huge apology, saying, I'm sorry, I had no guess she was. Please take the money back. And a lot of people did. And what it did was, it showed that in this day and age, there are people who still think that a human being doesn't need help. Their family doesn't need help with funeral costs, or whatever it is that they're suffering, they don't deserve sympathy because of their faith. And you know, it's time we moved on from all of this. So um um basically, as we know, children who are from a refugee um. Family or who are from a persecuted um people, what happens? They've come from a fa- from a from a very difficult background, and even those who have lived here in or in America. Uh what happens is, even though they've lived in a very safe environment, they have still grown up. Hearing at the dinner table about the hatred for the Shia. Whether it's in current events, in the newspaper, or on the TV, but also in the family, they hear about how friends do this. And even from the pulpit, they hear, and they hear about the hatred from their fellow friends as well. And so this inequality, this oppression perpetuates itself, it continues, the cycle continues, and it is an elephant in the room. And we are here, thanks to Malihay, uh to talk about that elephant in the room, so that you all can. Help us and help our children and help Canada be a safe place and a place where people are enlightened. And um there there, you know, there's all these negative societal beliefs about these minority students. And this word minority, uh remember, is often a sociological term. Uh a place like Iraq, which is a Shia majority in terms of the population, has. Is being treated as a minority sociological term, where you are oppressed. So these students who are um sometimes Syrian refugees, or sometimes who've just grown up here, they still are facing the language barriers. They have a lack of trust in the public authorities, right? Because of their prev- previous experience. A lot of children uh from these places where they have fleeing persecution. Still look at policemen and policewomen as someone who's maybe going to hurt them. It's not a safe figure often, and sometimes a knock on the door can trigger for these children. Stress and trauma, because their parents react like that, because I had a family friend who was like, this is what happened to us in Iraq. That the, you know, a strange knock on the door, door opened, and the door opens, and the. The authorities took my brother away, and we never saw him again. And this is in Toronto, in Mississauga, I remember, I went to her house, and I just showed up at her door, and knocked, and she opened the door with her hand on her chest, and she said. I'm sorry, even now, when the door bell rings, I get scared. It triggers all those memories. Think of what happens to the grandchildren who live in such a home, when they're seeing their grandmother be that way. Throughout her life, where she's talking about being afraid, she's talking about alienation, that unresolved trauma. And uh these things may feel insurmountable to educators, like we're saying, how can we help? But we've seen in my my situation, and in many cases, that teachers can absolutely be part of the solution. They can stop this violence and the discrimination, they can make things a uh a teaching moment and say, listen. Why have you said this to this person? You must apologize. And then you have a student saying, well, in my culture, we don't apologize to women. And it's teaching moment, or these people, they're infidels, why should we? They they're they're lesser than us. These kinds of things, rather than saying, take this home, take this out of the classroom, if we could have the courage to talk about them. And realize that doing that, you can help someone who has already suffered a lot. They have also suffered from missing school, they have seen war, they have seen violence, they've seen murder, rape. They've heard about people whose daughters were taken away, they've faced problems, poverty at home, poverty in the new home. Uh the depression, loneliness, the PTSD in their relatives, in the family. They are already seeing uh their fathers now unemployed, being considered. Less of a human being, because he doesn't have a job. I remember in my time, I had to be, yes, the interpreter, my parents spoke good English. And still do, my father's passed away, but uh my mother has, I would say, a better English and grammar than even I do. However, the accent is very difficult to keep, and also that whole thing about. Uh the Caucasian people are more powerful, they're stronger, they're 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 better than us, that that that. Uh accepted racism that, well, you know, that we that we 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 put in and onto our hearts. I was often in parent-teacher interviews, interpret, the interpreter and the translator, and. I didn't have to be that, neither did I have to be that person who taught Islam to my teachers and my fellow students, but I had to. In my case, it worked out, because I became a preacher and an educator, but not everyone accepts this role. Most people are so angry, they say, you know what, I'm not a Muslim, I'm I'm not gonna speak about them. No, I'm not gonna sha- te- share with you that I'm a Shia. So um remember that these families have suffered. They have left homes, really nice homes. A lot of Syrian refugees will tell you, I don't wanna come here, I wanna go back. A lot of immigrants that still say, back home, that this to say, uh you know, our property still still is there, we we will go one day, but. Their grandchildren are like, this is home now, what are you talking about? Uh they've fled their homes, but they're still very much traumatized, so the Shi'as also are suffering that every day. As these um these um incidences of uh uh of persecution are. Every day being um reported in the news. And uh very quickly, in the few minutes that I have, I wanna share with you, uh and you know, quickly, very quickly. I'm and I'm gonna share, I'm gonna give this PowerPoint, so that you can all read this, because. This tall uh order here of talking about Shia genocide, well, it's all there in the news. And uh this is the article that I wrote, and that was um twenty-eight years ago. Uh so, just this thing, the uh that, you know, the importance of the educator. That we need to see people, the Shia faith. That we need to see people, the Shia faith, as a member of a persecuted people. This quote I love. An immigrant leaves his homeland to find greener grass. A refugee leaves his homeland because the grass is burning under his feet. And as educators, if we could look with that kind of compassion at the students in front of us. The Shia, we talk about them as a minority, that's again, that's a sociological term. This is one day Uh Arba Ina, Sheikh has talked about, uh where often there are twenty eight million Just, and these, these are the shrines that are always in danger. We go through a lot of security to be able to get inside. Uh it's the largest annual pilgrimage pilgrimage, twenty one million, twenty eight million. These are numbers that are, that are real numbers, documented numbers. And we walk, we walk eighty kilometers. I've walked from Najaf to Karbala. And uh food is given out free. It's a peaceful gathering and it's uh rarely reported in the news. Uh often you'll see Ashura, pictures of people bleeding self, uh you know, they're, they're flagellating, et cetera. Uh well, well, where you don't see this, that twenty eight million people are together. There is room for everyone. Everyone's feeding each other for free. We're all standing. I'm, I've been one of those people in that crowd. That's just on a day, one day. Throughout the year, these shrines are visited. The Shia are not a small number. We are a great number. We're just a persecuted people and our faith has lasted fourteen hundred years. So this is what the shrines look like. They're very beautiful. They're, they are full of gold. These are gold. Hundred percent gold and jewels and gems and they are under attack. Um when we go in there, often bombs blow when we're here in such gatherings. This is Iran. And uh this is me in Stockholm, Sweden, ten thousand people. So don't think that the, the uh the Shias don't just uh are just in maybe Toronto or I have spoken all over the world and I'll tell you, huge processions like these are nothing. In India, I have spoken, there've been ten, twenty, thirty thousand people. Um these loudspeakers go miles and miles because the entire cities are Shia. So what is this anti-Shiaism? It's a hatred, prejudice, discrimination, persecution uh because of religion, traditions And Shia persecution. It's happened. Yes, it's ISIS that really took this to the next level. And uh that's when um large numbers of people then were getting beheaded. And uh yes, in parts of the world where the shrines are, that definitely those shrines are Are destroyed, but also graves are destroyed. In Saudi Arabia, we have the daughter, Lee Prophet of Islam. Her grave has been destroyed. His grandchildren, his own children, um uh graves of his companions. Over ten thousand graves have been destroyed by those who um say they're Muslims, but they are actually Uh destroying the shrines of the Muslims. So why is this genocide with, you know? And I'll leave this all to you so you can read it quickly, quickly. I'm just going to go through all of this and to just to prove to you. John Kerry had talked about this in the White House and United Secretary of State, that he said Daesh, this is another name for ISIS. They are responsible. So the word genocide has become, this is not just us saying it's a genocide. This is a true thing that's happening and it has been Amnesty International, these are all quotes and 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 statistics. And I thank Malihay for helping me with this. Afghanistan, all the time, all right? Pakistan, all the time. And there's a brain drain in Pakistan. Not only do they kill doctors, lawyers, poets, speakers, Islamic speakers, But they also uh force them to leave the country. All of those people come here and then they cannot practice. Cannot be a doctor anymore, cannot be a lawyer anymore. And um uh in places like Afghanistan and Burj Al Arab, et cetera. Entire busloads of people who are um coming to the shrines um are beheaded. Bus, you know, they enter the bus, they kill them. They kill them all. They never get to the shrine. So getting to the shrine is a very dangerous thing as it is. And then you have to deal with often a school board that says um Uh where are you going? Why should you go? Uh no, you're dealing with danger as it is and then you're dealing with uh red tape. So quickly, I'm just going to go through this and I, I'm going to use just uh maybe two more minutes. Um because we did want to leave some time for questions, but we want to tell you so much, you could actually, you know, absolutely Click on these things and see the 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 numbers, the numbers, the numbers are all there to prove that there is a genocide. And so what's happening to these kids who are in your class? They're hearing about this. They're seeing this. Their parents are watching the news. Their lives are interrupted. They are facing PTSD. They've been, they've been relocated. They don't necessarily have to be refugees. They're suffering because in their city always there is persecution. So there is PTSD that's going on. There are the symptoms of PTSD, uh everyone knows this, but just the last two slides if you could allow me. What you can do as a teacher is use these current events um to talk about sectarian violence. But when you do it, be careful because do not talk about things that you not know about or you've read about Because chances are, a lot of these things are not even true, what you're reading. Do look for true experts. Do look for Shia who speak about the Shia faith and the Shia violence. There are many, many, many Who have written books who appear on CNN, who appear all over the world, uh who are Harvard graduates, uh who are from Princeton, from Harvard, Who are doing this and they know what it's all about. Have these kinds of guest speakers now. Uh and read their books. Discuss the concept of Islamophobia, the stereotypes, the ill effects, the resulting violence. I know this is a tall ta- a tall order. There's a lot more we want to cover in the class, but we can, it can be done. And teachers have done it and will continue to do it. That's the only way we can make this world a better place. And yes, ensure the school calendar includes these certain dates. Ask the students, why were you of accent? Were you, was it a religious holiday? Tell me about it. Uh let's make sure that I write that down so I will not give you a big essay to do in the holy month of Ramadan when you are fasting and you're falling asleep. Um teachers want students to learn. They're not there to catch them and 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 make life difficult. So ensure that students receive counseling when, actually, when these things are in the news. Recently, when Afghanistan had this, uh children were killed at their desks. Little, little tiny shoes, um these pictures are all over the internet, bloody shoes. As well as uh teachers keeping bouquets of flowers on these desks. Uh and then one or two students were alive, were sitting there at their, at their desk to give the idea that, look what's happened. Children are seeing this. Now with the internet, everyone is privy to this. We're seeing it on internet, on, on Twitter, on Facebook, on Insta, everywhere. It's time to talk about it in the classroom and say, you, we need to have counselors and come in to talk to you all. Because this is not good. It's going to cause PTSD in you all because you are Shia. You're worried that this violence might come here to your, to our country. So talk about these sectarian biases within the staff, within the classroom. There are people who feel this way. They're closet Uh bullies, closet haters, closet racists. And and yes, there are people who are hiding the fact that they're Shia. Be sensitive with the terminology. Especially when these Islamic political figures are being talked about and we call them, you know, using the T-word, et cetera. So um you know, there is so much we can do. Thank you for listening. And I'm, I do apologize that there, we overwhelmed you with a lot of statistics, a lot of religious information And a lot of requests as well. Um but I do want to thank you from the bottom of my heart personally, as well as on behalf of uh Sheikh Kazwini, as well as um Malihay, um Malihay Elias, uh for making this happen because uh we already feel So empowered. We already feel so um hopeful. And hope, as long as there's hope, there is a possibility Uh that Berlin Wall falls and that uh that survivors of the Holocaust can talk about their story. That those who are suffering the Holocaust right now, you can call it a different name. It's genocide, but it is a Holocaust as well. And so when we're bringing that narrative of other people's stories in, that we can also talk about current events That genocide's happening, persecution is happening right now in the here and now. And it can stop if we all Joined hands together and said, all lives matter. Thank you so much for giving me your time and I'm sorry for taking extra time as well.
Thank you so, so, so very much, uh Zlakar Sheros. And um again, you know, as uh all three of us have mentioned, thank you so much for this. And as someone You know, myself as well, who has experienced first-hand Shia genocide, who has Experienced the bombing and the shooting and whatnot from a very young age. And I'm actually just, I'm actually trying my, I'm trying not to cry and break down Because uh these things really do bring back really painful memories. Um my own personal message to all of you is, do not take your lives for granted here, truly. Do not take your lives for granted here for, it's a I wish I can put into words what I, what I personally have seen, what I have experienced, but um It um, it's just very extremely traumatic. Uh but we were actually wondering if any of you have any questions, please, please, please ask us your question. And Deepa, you can stop uh re- recording in case anyone is uh is uh in, in case anyone wants to ask any questions. And before you do, uh before any of you do ask us any questions, please know that there is no such thing as a stupid question. We don't want any of you to feel like, oh, I would seem so ignorant if I asked this question. No, 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 please. This is your perfect time to ask us questions. We are here to help you. We are here to raise awareness and uh thank you. Thank you so, so, so very much.